I'd like to call the September 12th meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Please stand with me and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody once again. Just a reminder to make sure that your phone is silenced off and/or on airplane mode. And with that, we'll do roll call.
Keen?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Davis?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Item number four, amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments this evening?
No, there is none.
There is none? How about ceremonies, appointments, announcements, and/or presentations?
Nope.
None being said, is there a declaration of conflict from anyone tonight?
No.
Nope, okay. Then that would take us to consent calendar. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, item A is the minutes from the August 8th Planning and Zoning Meeting, and item B is the Riverview Addition Zone Change Findings.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I second.
Moved and seconded. A call for vote?
Hampi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Keen?
Yes.
All right, citizen issues. This is the section for individuals that wish to speak on an item that is not currently on the agenda or plan for future agendas. If you are planning to speak of something coming up in the future, you'd like to hold that for the meeting, but anyone for citizen issues this evening? Okay. Then unfinished old business, none?
There is none.
Which takes us to the meat of this evening, and that is the public hearings. Again, if you would like to speak, make sure, or if you have comment, make sure you fill out one of those papers and turn them in up front. And with that being said, we will go ahead and start the public hearing A, Revised Meadows Grove Preliminary PUD and Subdivision File Number P-17-03/ S-17-09. Mr. Manley to present.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Manley, so Planning Manager here at the City Post Falls, introducing the Meadow Grove Subdivision and PUD case file S-1709 and P-1703. The applicant is Tri-State Consulting Engineers. The owners are the Willamette Valley Real Property LLC. The requested action is for the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the subdivision and preliminary PUD request and make a recommendation of approval to City Council along with any appropriate conditions. The project location is it's west of Chase Road, north of Staples Road, south of Grange Avenue. The approved zoning for this is R-1S. It's about 20.8 acres. It's vacant with one single-family residence. There's no significant topology or vegetation for the site. Water would be provided by East Green Acres, with sewer being provided by the City Post Falls. Here you see the location visually. Here's Chase Road. There is Grange running east-west, and it's at the southwest corner of that. The subdivision element of the proposal is for 57 single-family lots, density of 2.74 units an acre. There are no internal streets. There is a new internal street being proposed, Wayward Loop, and the access would be from Grange Avenue and Staples Road. Looking at the surrounding zoning, you see where the lighter yellow, that's your R-1S, single-family residential suburban zone. Where you see the darker yellow, that is your R-1, your single-family residential. And then in purple, those are smart code zones, your lighter purple being your SC3, which is similar to the yellow and the darker yellow there, with the purple being more of your medium-density type zoning district. And you also see off to a little bit further along Spokane Street, in brown, an RMHP zone, and some R-3 and R-2 zone a little bit further to the southeast. For the PUD, they are proposing a single-family residential development with a 2.09 acre park. The reason for the 2.09, that's to meet the open space requirement, the 10% open space requirement for a PUD. Some exceptions that are being requested is that to follow the bulk replacement standards in the single-family residential for all phases. Part of that is because, we'll get into the layout, the lots aren't your, what they're proposing aren't the R-1S size. They want to get a little more dense, and in trade-off provide open space, so hence the request for the PUD. They also have some modified road standards. So here's where you see the PUD and subdivision plan. The common park area, the open space area is centrally located. That's oftentimes advantageous as it's, it allows all users within a subdivision about equal access to the open space. These lots that you see being proposed on Wayward Loop, they're just under 9,000 on average around this area, which is very similar to the lot size just south of Staples Road on Country Meadows. So they're very complementary to those lot sizes there. And then, in an attempt to blend in to the larger lots of the R-1S to the north and west, the lots increase to the, where you, here's Wayward Loop along the north side of it, and then a bit of the, along this section. So, looking at the review criteria for a PUD, the first one being it provides benefits that would not normally be achieved through compliance with standard zoning and subdivision regulations. Typical subdivisions don't normally provide open space. Sometimes they do, but generally, they don't bear that cost in with subdivision. So there's where they're providing open space and some smaller lots for that trade-off. Compatible with surrounding land uses, both existing and future. Staff would view that their proposed lot size being a R-1S suburban. R-1S suburban would band the spectrum from one acre all the way down to, up to eight units per acre would, or six units per acre would be all within that suburban spectrum for developments. They're compatible with each other. Third is that it's in conformance with the goals and policies found within the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan. This would be consistent with that aspect. Commented already on the open space. Also, a PUD should provide for the integrated and harmonious design of the arrangement of buildings and uses, being that this is all single-family with, whether it's R-1S or R-1, they're all similar setbacks generally, so they'd all be consistent with the surrounding environment. Looking at the subdivision review criteria, the first one deals with the water supply, the quantity inadequate in terms of quantity and quality. East Green Acres, they'll be providing the water to the site. Looking at the sewage system and capabilities of providing for this, City Post Falls has adequate capacity to provide service to the subdivision, and that the layout is adequate. Looking at the streets and its consistency with the transportation elements in the comprehensive plan, the roadway alignments and cross-sections are appropriate, and there would be no direct access from subdivision lots to Grange Avenue. And the layout accommodates connectivity. Fourth one deals with topographical conditions presenting hazards, whether they've been identified and proposed uses. This site doesn't present any soil or topographical conditions worth mentioning. The fifth one is the area proposed for subdivision zoned for the proposed use and conforms to the other requirements found in this code. So, as mentioned, we're here with the PUD. So depending on your review of the PUD and approval, would be where, weight on this condition. So if, if the PUD was denied, then the proposed subdivision wouldn't be consistent, so they kind of go hand-in-hand together on this one. Because they are asking for smaller lots than what would typically be in an R-1S. The sixth one is that, has a developer made adequate plans to ensure the community costs bear no more than its fair share costs. These are addressed through annexation impact fees at the time of building permits being issued. So, we didn't receive any other comments from agencies, but in your staff report, you may have noticed that there was a, an additional condition that was proposed by the Meadows HOA, in which there were, they were proposing single-story residences, and that you could have additional dwelling units above a garage. And then that, this would be for lots 1 through 18, it's adjacent to the, those larger lots. The applicant has reviewed that proposal and is, is okay with, with that proposal. Staff though, would like to maybe make an additional comment. We've had some further discussions since it's been submitted, and there's different ways you could potentially handle this. Preferably, having it as a condition for the PUD isn't maybe the best way of dealing with it, because it would lend itself down the road if, you know, it all gets built out 10 years, someone wants to go do a second-story addition. A condition like this isn't intuitive for PUDs. It's very unusual, so therefore it has a high probability of being overlooked and, and could be constructed in that manner. The other one that was brought up is potentially putting it on a plat. Now, a condition like this on a plat, a plat's a survey document. It's, it's for easements and, and other restrictions dealing with utilities and whatnot. So, the preferred path for the staff would be that language like this, if it was to be sought, would be within the CCNRs of the subdivision. So, and on that, I would stand for any questions or comments you have for me at this point.
So, just so I understand, instead of it being a, it would be a condition on the plat or in the CCNRs?
No, staff wouldn't recommend putting it on a plat at all.
Okay, so it should be in the CCNRs?
Correct.
How can we make a, how can we force a condition in the CCNRs? I mean, have CCNRs been created? Is there an HOA? Is there, I mean?
I'd like to punt this to Warren here and have him respond on it.
So, because there's open space, they're going to have to form an owners association to care for the open space. And so, one of the obligations, my understanding is the applicant is at least amenable to this discussion. You can ask him when he comes up. But if, assuming that that's the case, that would be an appropriate mechanism to, to regulate what happens on those lots. It's a deed restriction essentially. It's placed in, on the property as part of the CCNRs.
But CCNRs can be changed?
And they can be, but you, in the past, I've had language where they can't change certain requirements of the CCNRs without the city's approval. Anything that's required by the city, they can't change without coming and getting the city's blessing.
So, how, how could, how would it fit into a motion, or would it at all? I mean, if it got to that point, would?
You'd just add it as an additional condition that the CCNRs include that requirement.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
And that that requirement within the CCNRs would not be, could not be changed without the consent of the city?
Yeah, and then, then ultimately, the staff looks at those CCNRs when they're drafted, ensures that the language is there before we sign off on it.
Okay.
John, I have a question. You said typical on R-1S can be one per acre or up to six per acre?
Well, straight, the vested rights for the R-1S is one-acre lots. The only way to get around the one-acre lots is through some form of a PUD. And so, when you look at the Prairie Meadows and the Meadows, the Meadows is really the only one-acre lot subdivision. Most of everything else out there, Craftsman, Meadow Ridge, Prairie Meadows, those are all PUDs with some distribution of lots smaller than one acre.
Any other questions? Mr. Manley, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Applicant?
Is that the one you want me to hear? Is that your presentation there?
Is it the one that shows the PUD with the surrounding?
I don't know which one you had. All of you?
I didn't have any.
Did you have a?
He's looking for my overheads for you, and I don't have any for you. Move those things out of the way so I don't end up flashing things up by mistake. So we're back here again. We withdrew our last application because we heard what the commission was saying as a body to us, and your concerns. And we've gone back, and the development team has revised Meadow Grove, as you can see. So in this third presentation, we now have gone from the original 71 proposed lots down to 57. We understood that there were concerns that the lots transitioned better between Country Meadows 2 to the south, and there was a concern that they were not wide enough. We have widened those. They're actually now wider than the lots to the south. And the ones to the north were originally wider, and we have left it that way. So, we have addressed that concern raised by the commission at the last one by reducing density and increasing lot size to make it more compatible based on what we heard from the commissioners as they were deliberating. We have left in the two-acre city park with amenities. That is required because we are requesting a PUD, but we still continue to have that in there along with the amenities that we've committed to put in, which I don't know if you recall from last time or not, but we have committed to put in a pickleball court, a pergola, and walking trails. And again, that's done partially in compliance with the open space requirement to get a PUD, but the amenities are not required, and those, those are we're doing in part to make the lots more attractive and to make it better for the community. We have met with the homeowners association and heard more of their concerns. And if you look in your packet, you will see A7, which is an email from the board members of the homeowners association, and their condition that they wanted us to include in our packet, which we have done, and to agree to. And that is that lots 1 through 18 will agree to a 15-foot set off at the back. This back set off be from the rear fence 15 feet, and that we limit those to one story with only a bonus room above the garage, and we are amenable to that. As you heard last time, our target market on these are older folks anyway. We're hoping that it will be attractive to people who are downsizing or retiring in the community, and that fits with our sales model as it is. So we have no problem committing to that. I heard some questions about how do we do that, and I would agree with your staff member, the plat's not typically the place to do it. And sometimes the county will not allow you to try and put building restrictions into plats, because they are for public dedications and for the layout of the land that's being subdivided. I agree with your staff that it should go into the CCNRs. I have done that myself on some past ones that I've worked on. And so, what you do when you devise those covenants, conditions, and restrictions, they're the same as actually writing it in the deed, but there's usually so many of them, you don't want to write it over and over in the deed. So you file a separate covenant, condition, and restriction, and it's the same as though it were in the deed. And for that specific item, you say that it has to be on these lots, meet these building requirements, and there can be no change to that without prior approval of the city. So the city remains in control of that condition. I would also submit that the, you also may want to see it in your development agreement, that you have the applicant included in the development agreement, so that you have the contractual obligation there, and not just us saying that we're going to do it, and you saying you want to set it as a condition. That development agreement then controls, and we're required to put it in there if it appears in your development agreement. So that would be my proposal on meeting what the homeowners association requested, and we committed to doing. Your staff has gone through and discussed that it, this does conform with the surrounding communities around it now, better fits those surrounding communities now that we've reduced density. And it doesn't present other problems with your comp plan, such as transportation problems, or problems with the water and the sewer. Those are all in place and ready to go. It does offer some amenities not found in a traditional subdivision with the park. It does allow you to have the comp plan met for building out those public roads, because those will have to be built out as part of this subdivision, and you'll get the connectivity that your comp plan and transportation seeks to have with Grange Avenue. And it allows for a development that both satisfies the homeowners association and the applicant. So on that basis, we would ask that you give us an approval tonight. And I would direct you to the staff's comment from Planning Division that says Planning Division has no concerns with the requested exceptions, and has no objections with the proposed preliminary PUD and subdivision, subject to the conditions presented as part of this staff report, which is the homeowners association's concerns about lots 1 through 18. So we would ask that you adopt that and forward it for approval. Are there any questions on any of the items I've covered?
Question to applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There's more representative from the applicant.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening. For the record, Steve Circa with Tri-State Consulting Engineers. And I wanted to just point out a couple of things. Last time we were here, Vice Chairman, Mr. Kimball, you had mentioned you were concerned about additional pedestrian walkway and whatnot and access. So I want to let you know that you probably have already reviewed this, but we did provide for both pedestrian walkway, you know, all the way, all the way around, all the way around here. You had mentioned that, and I, we took that to heart, and we did add that into our roadway section. And then another note, this part here is lot 18, so that condition really needs to go to lots 1 through 17, because that's an existing structure already, and it's already over one acre, so it's already at R-1S density. So, those are the only two things I wanted to spell out on a technical matter, and if you have any questions, then I'm here. But otherwise, we'll let the people talk.
Any questions?
Steve? Thank you.
Thanks. I have a quick question for staff. Warren, are, are the conditions of approval included in the development agreement?
We include them by reference.
So?
So we pick them up. If they're in a condition, we're going to include them in the, in the development agreement.
So by default, then if we were to add a condition, then it gets put in the development agreement, so we don't need to put that in a condition?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question too. Is it desirable for the city to remain in control then on that condition, or the restriction that's added to the CCNRs, as far as if in the future somebody?
Typically, whenever I've done this in the past, if it's a city requirement that something be added to the CCNRs, we, I have typically required that it can't be changed without the city's permission. Just because, the whole reason it's there is because we asked for it to be there. It's not necessary. I mean, if that's, I mean, that's up to you all. But that's typically how I've done it in the past.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Public comment. All those in favor? All right, in favor wishing to speak, Jennifer Johnson. Again, if you come up to speak, just ask you state your name and your address, and you have four minutes.
Round three. I admire your guys' resilience and willingness to keep revisiting things. Jennifer Johnson, 3340 North Serenity Avenue in Post Falls, Idaho, in, in the Meadows. Okay, I'm in favor of this project. I think there's been a lot of work done on trying to accommodate neighbors and make a really, really good transition between the existing neighborhoods. There's a good feathering out by the sizes of the lots back up to the Meadows. You know, the first issue that the HOA from the Meadows had with this project was density. Matt addressed that density issue when he dropped it from 97 down to 73 lots. At that point, you know, I thought, okay, you know, that's, that's in good faith, and that was a good compromise. And then our HOA decided that they wanted to have another issue, and so now the issue became the size of the lots, not just the density. So it began to take on this moving target sort of event from the, the board and representing the HOA members. And so, back to the drawing board, Matt reduced those, yet down to 57 lots, he made the larger lots back up to the Meadows property, so that there was a very good feathering out, and that the Meadows neighbors would not have two or three houses behind them. You know, and I thought, wow, that is a lot of concessions. And I admire the fact that Matt also agreed to go for the single, single-story, whatever. We have tall houses in the Meadows. We have big bonus rooms over garages, so we're really kind of going to be overshadowing the backyard neighbors. So I'm not sure that that's a fair requirement, but if it's something that everybody agrees to, then so be it. I think this project needs to go through. I think everything has been done in order to make it meet the needs on the part of the neighbors that are concerned about it. I think it melds well into the houses built on Staples. Am I running out of time?
You have two minutes and 54 seconds.
Oh, it's right there. I didn't even notice that. I should have from Toastmasters. Okay. I just, I think in some way, way, shape, and form, I think our board representing our members has not acted in as good a faith as Matt has acted. And I will tell you right now, we first met, Polar Construction, Matt and Mike, when we stood here and objected. My husband and I objected to the development that is going in behind us. And that's at five acres on Grange and Chase. Okay. So, you know, that's going to be much, much more density. But what we discovered was, by sitting down and talking with Matt and sharing concerns back and forth, we developed a relationship. We developed a good enough relationship that actually Polar Construction is building a rather sizable shop on our lot right now as we speak. I have to say, integrity is top-notch. Quality is top-notch. Absolutely dedicated attention to detail. So I think dealing with Matt on, and Polar Construction on this whole development, is the best way the city can go for a quality project that is going to line up with the houses in the neighborhoods around it. I have to say, I think that we need to move forward with this one.
Okay, thank you very much. One thing tonight, just to make mention, I know that there's a lot of passion involved in this. I would just ask that, that we keep everything civil, and if we could hold applause until the very end, or not at all, and we'll deal with it afterwards. So thank you very much. Next individual who does not wish to speak, in favor Matthew, is it, is it Fana? Fana? Oh, sorry. Subdivision is collective effort to bring needed housing products to the people and they want, that they want in their community. Duly noted. Next individual who does not wish to speak but is in favor, Doug Boseth. I know this will be a hardship on the people of the Meadows, as they I know this will be a hardship on the people of the Meadows, as they'll have nowhere else for them to dump garbage, so on and so forth, clippings. And I'm in favor, because I'm tired of cleaning the mess up. Duly noted, Doug. Another individual who does wish to speak and is in favor is Kathy, Kathy Boseth. Kathy, will you come up? Again, state your name, address, and you have four minutes.
I live at 210 South Elmer in Post Falls. My mouth gets very dry. I'm Doug's wife. I watched Doug and Matt and his grandma farm that land for a long time, many years, until we were taxed out by the people moving in around us. And so we became basically one of the few remaining places that, you know, that were left. And the people, who are very aesthetically minded, I know that, you drove over our property, you drove over our irrigation lines, you dumped garbage on our property, you ignored all our private property signs to make a thorough ferret through there. You totally, I mean, this is not what we do in Idaho. This is not neighborly, okay? Because I live in a single house on five acres, that doesn't mean I'm making my, I'm going to court or going to the city council to make sure they only have one house on five acres. I'm sure you would like it. It's very, but I didn't see any good valid reasons for you doing this, except you wanted everybody to be like you. You ruined our property, and that land is the only land that has been, you have not agreed upon, anybody has not agreed upon, to put in these acres, in these houses, even though they're bigger than the other proposed housing developments. They didn't involve children, you know, they were for older people or single people. We don't do that in Idaho. We don't treat our neighbors that way. And I think this is a conflict of interest, because you've damaged our land. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Continuing on, those neutral. Scott Portman does wish to speak and is neutral. Scott?
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Scott Portman, 320 East Nider Avenue in Coeur d'Alene. I'm here representing the Meadows Homeowners Association, as I have in the past, and I think this is the first time I have ever addressed a commission as a neutral party. This is a little, little odd. Anyway, I'm happy to report that I am neutral here tonight, on behalf of the Meadows Association, because the board, as you've heard, the, the board of the association and Mr. Afana met over several hours and were able to negotiate some amendments to the proposed PUD and some concessions that allowed the board to feel satisfied that their concerns had been heard and addressed. And those concessions, those restrictions are contained in that Exhibit A7, which is in the staff's report. I'm, I'm happy that the, the proposal for how those restrictions would be implemented is consistent with what the association's expecting, that those restrictions would be incorporated into the covenants for the project in, in a way that would not allow them to be amended without city approval. And we would agree with the, the suggestion that they also be incorporated into the development agreement. So based on that negotiated resolution, the Meadows Association, through its Board of Directors, is withdrawing its opposition to this project, and that's why I am here neutral. Now, you may hear individual homeowners from the Meadows who are remaining opposed to this project, but they are not speaking for the Board of Directors or for the association. So officially, the association is withdrawing its opposition. So appreciate you following through with the implementation of that restriction, as we've discussed.
Right.
Thank you.
Scott Portman, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read those that do not wish to speak first, and then those that wish to speak again. My recommendation would be, is that if someone gets up and gives testimony exactly the same as you wish to present, is to take that into consideration. First individual, Glenda Duggan is, does not wish to speak, in opposition. I'm against granting the PUD. Why vote for, for, is if you, but why vote for, if you grant the builder the PUD? This will void the R1S zoning and allow the builder to do what they want. Doesn't the PUD allow the builder to make any changes to the plans, like smaller lots and less than one-third acres, changes to the plans? I am in favor of half-acre lots with like housings that look similar to the Meadows and Prairie Meadows. John Duggan is also opposed, does not wish to speak. I would like to, I would like to have any and all lots that back up to the Meadows no less than a half acre in size, all others less than a third of the acre in, size. That would be nice transition to the Meadows and Prairie Meadows and allow for better off-street parking for the homeowners closer to R1S. The city council voted in favor of. Opposed, not wishing to speak, Larry Castor. The subdivision plan still does not meet the city council's mandate to be more like Prairie Meadows, half-acre lots. Ed and Susan Garrett, in opposition, do not wish to speak. R1S zoning, 35 homes. City council called for R1S zoning. Why are we wasting this time? Sally, Sally, pronounced your last name, is it Ozen or Dozen?
Dozen.
Dozen. Okay. I'm sorry. It's, I don't mean to butcher anybody's name. Opposed, does not wish to speak. The planning commission was very clear that they wanted to see the lots at least a third acre. Only three lots meet this request. Majority of the lots are less than 10,000 square feet. Seven lots are approximately 10,000 square feet of, or less than an acre. 18 lots, less than a third of the acre, or approximately 12,000 square feet. PUD should not be granted, does not meet existing aesthetics. Okay. Those wishing to speak is, Willie Spicken, Willie wishes to speak in opposition? Again, if you wish to speak, again, state your name and address, and you have four
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Willie Spicker. I live at 1507 West Staples Drive, within a quarter mile of this proposed PUD plan. I'm against it, because the zoning was declared to be or voted to be R1S. A PUD changes that, so why bother to zone it at R1S to start with? Okay? The city council expressed their desire in general that the lots look more like the Meadows or the Prairie Meadows subdivision. The other thing I was intrigued to find out about tonight was, I'm a trash dumper on somebody's property, yet I've only been there for a couple of months. So don't like being lumped in a general group of people for something that's happened. The, the other thing that I've seen since I've lived there is, to the south of Staples, kind of catty corner from where I live, is the Country Meadows subdivision. And by the time the first part of those that were built, the houses are in there, a lot of those people put in fairly big shops. So even though it's not right next to me, it sure looks awful cramped in that neighborhood. And then if you grant this PUD, I think that's what's going to happen in this new neighborhood, in spite of what's being proposed with the current PUD. Yeah, there's been reduction in density and stuff, but, you know, it, it still should go down to at least a half an acre for the lot sizes in, in this neighborhood, you know? Otherwise, why bother to have the R1S designation to start with? You know, and just like people that want taxes out of my back pocket, we keep coming back to this issue time and time again, even after people are told no. So again, just to finalize, I'm against the PUD and suggested, or request that you vote against this PUD proposal. Thanks.
Duly noted. Thank you, sir. Mark Hoppe, in opposition, wish to speak.
Hoppey, hoppey. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Name is Mark Hoppe. I reside at 2164 West Polo Green. You know, I've heard a lot of talk about concessions being made, and we're really working with people on how to make this a better subdivision. And I wouldn't really call them concessions. I'd characterize that as really meeting city code, which the first couple of plans have not. The changes made to the plan subsequent to the August P&amp;C meeting are in the right direction, but still do not meet municipal code or the direction of the city council. And I still go back to that June 19 city council meeting, where the council voted four to one in favor of annexing the parcel at R1S zoning rather than R1 zoning, which they requested. The majority of the council members were very clear in their belief as to appropriate designation for this parcel. I'd like to share a few of the comments from that meeting. So you'll see some of the comments up there. I won't read them all this time, but you can. And let's see, I'll just focus on Mr. Malloy's comments. It says, "We look at that block as a whole, it is fairly apparent what the spirit of that block is to be, and that is R1S. Does it really affect the tenor, I suppose, of that block? And I think it would, to put in R1 here. It just doesn't fit the plat. I think R1S is the more sensible choice." Additional commissioners had, or counselors had the same feelings, and you can read those up there if you'd like. What I didn't hear at that meeting was the suggestion or implication that only one lot in the proposed subdivision should meet the R1S requirements, and the balance should be developed to R1 standards, which is still really where we're at. Keeping in mind, that one lot is existing and only being slightly modified. The attempt at circumventing the council's decision is being done by proposing that this land be developed as a PUD, which we still seem to be missing the meat of the PUD requirements. We've met the 10% open space, but I really don't see how any of the other requirements are met. There's also been some discussion about the adjacent properties, and we have a slide showing comparison, again, to the new proposed R1S PUD in there. And we did change the background, so it didn't look like the city provided that slide. But what that table shows is that the proposed Meadow Grove density is still more than two times the density of Prairie Meadows. Smallest lot in Meadow Grove would be half the size of the smallest lot in Prairie Meadows. Also of note, again, is that the second largest lot in Meadow Grove is smaller than the smallest lot in Prairie Meadows. So every new lot will be smaller than the smallest lot in Prairie Meadows, and it gets a lot worse when you compare it to the Meadows, as you can see. This proposal doesn't even stack up when compared to the closest R1 zone project, Country Meadows, which has a lower density of 2.4 units per acre. Didn't put that up there. And they don't have a park or open space. Essentially, the applicant is proposing an R1 subdivision at more than 50% of the maximum allowed density for an R1 subdivision, jutting right into the middle of the existing R1S developments, again paraphrasing city council. This plan is exactly what city council voted against by approving the R1S zoning. You've heard some comments tonight, somewhat implying that the plan has been approved by the Meadows Homeowners Association, and that is not the case, that's far from it. A few of the board members agreed to take a neutral position regarding this plan in exchange for the concessions that were discussed. Some of those concessions specifically benefit one or more of those board members, I would point out. The other 160 or so members were not consulted on this. Every Meadows homeowner who commented at the last P&amp;C meeting against the plan was against the density, and I think the majority of us still are. So clearly, the board is not representing the association as a whole. Regarding putting the requirement in the CCNRs, having been on the board and having tried to enforce CCNRs, it feels like that won't really, that'll be a challenge to get that enforced, because outside of the association, I don't know who really has recourse to go in there and enforce those CCNRs. So I see my time is up, so thank you for your.
All right. Thank you very much. Next in opposition wishing to speak, Bob Flowers.
Good evening. Bob Flowers, 3914 East Maplewood Avenue, Post Falls. My major concern with this PUD, with this project and its complete, is it says R1S, it should stay R1S, and if anything, it should be a whole lot closer to the other developments in the area. In other words, nothing less than a third of an acre on these lots, or maybe some half-acre lots. Because a person, how do they know what they can do? What encourages somebody to buy a piece of property in this town that's zoned R1S, thinking, okay, this is how I'm going to invest my money, this is how I'm going to, this is how I want to live? And then they invest all their money into this piece of property, build a beautiful home, and the next thing you know, somebody comes around and says, oh, no, we want to change this zoning. Why shouldn't there be some protection for the folks that choose to invest in R1S property? Some way to protect them from somebody coming behind them and changing the rules of the game? I mean, it just doesn't make sense. These folks have put out a lot of money, built some beautiful homes, and all they're asking is to be considered, or they're asking for the same rules to go with the folks that are coming later that they had to go by. They're just asking for an even break. And I just believe that this PUD, and I'm not sure how they come up with the other 2.8 or whatever acres on this. I never got a look at this plat map before this. Before, last meeting, it was two acres. This time, it seems to have grown a little bit. I'm not sure where they got the extra land. The lots around it look about the same. But I just believe that somebody needs to take a stand and say, the zoning is what the zoning is. If you don't like it, then don't build there. Because these people have built there, and they built there with an R1S. They didn't build for R1, because the zoning is R1S. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Next in opposition wishing to speak, Deb Saunders. Deb?
My name is Deb Saunders. I live at 1216 West Grange. I do back up to the proposed PUD. I'd like to take you back to kind of where we started. Mr. Circo didn't want to own 97 lots, but that's exactly where they started. Then they went down to 71. Then we came back again, and three council, or three commissioners voted that down as well, taking into consideration what the city council said as an R1S designation. Now, of course, they're betting. They've placed their bets. Four members of the Meadows Association have also placed their bets, and they're betting that one of you is going to capitulate. Now, Mr. Davis and Mr. Kimball, you have been opposed to R1S from the beginning. You have not changed your vote, so they're not betting on you. Ms. Hampi, Ms. Carey, and Mr. Latham. Ms. Hampi, Ms. Carey, and Mr. Latham voted last time to uphold the R1S. So Mr. Latham isn't here tonight. So, Mr. Keane, we've never met you before. We've not seen you. We don't know how you feel about this. But I'm telling you that the two parties, the Meadows, the four Meadows Board members and the developer, are betting that one of you will capitulate. I ask that you not. I ask that you listen to what the constituents of this community said to you, and that we matter. The other thing I think you have to pay attention to is what happened at the beginning when 97 lots looked like a slam dunk. They were allowed to put in infrastructure. No other developer had ever been allowed to put in infrastructure prior to annexation. That infrastructure was put in, and we can only assume that the Planning Department of the city of Post Falls told them that they could do it. The engineer of record turns out to be the engineer of record on the properties to the south. He didn't know he was the engineer of record on this infrastructure that went in until it was pointed out to him. So no permit, no inspection. You've got an engineer who didn't even know he was responsible for this. So I don't think that any of this can pass the smell test. I think there's a lot of maneuvering. I think there's deals made. What happened with the Meadow Board members is they were told by the developer that you can't make it pencil. And if you make me make those lots larger, you're going to have two-story homes. Well, we have two-story homes in the meadows, but they don't back up 25 feet off the back fence. And that's what they're asking you for. So the bets are placed, and I hope truly that you will examine your hearts. Thank you.
Thank you. Wishing to speak again in opposition is Paul Urtell.
My name is Paul Urtell, and I live at 1400 West Grange. And I cannot believe that our HOA had a meeting with the developer without consulting the people who live in the meadows. They do not represent myself, and I do not think they represent most of the homeowners. I think it would have been nice if the HOA would have said, we are meeting with the developer, and come, and we want you to voice your opinion. So when you hear that the Meadows HOA has approved something, I want you to understand very clearly that they have no right to approve anything with the city. I don't know what they are thinking, but we do not want this in the meadows. As far as I know, there's maybe one person, or maybe two people, that have said that they are in favor of this in the meadows. I think everyone else has said very, very clearly, this is something we don't want. And why don't we want it? Why is everyone so upset? You can see it. You can see it in their faces. And the reason is, is because they had a choice. When we purchased in the meadows, we had an area that was rural in nature. There was space around our homes. We enjoyed that type of complexion in our neighborhood where we had a little bit of space. We had room for our shops. We had a conforming neighborhood. And when we have properties that are coming up adjacent to ours that are basically R1 in nature, what it does is it takes away our choice. We were given a choice when we purchased. That choice has now been taken away from us or is being taken away from us. I drove out of Fisher Road today, and I drove eight tenths of a mile, and I saw eight projects going on right now. There is no shortage of R1 zoning, high-density housing in the city of Post Falls. Absolutely no shortage. But I'll tell you one thing. There is a shortage of the type of homes that we enjoy and that we have loved and felt accustomed to, and we really feel that the Planning and Zoning Commission should really look at this. Who does this benefit? Who does this project benefit? Does it benefit the people in the meadows? Well, two people say it does. But I think we have probably another 140 people who say, absolutely not, we don't want that. So does it benefit the developer? Absolutely. They'll make money. Does it benefit the person selling the property? Yeah. But it really doesn't benefit the people who own in the area and have invested in the area and have grown this to be their community. And we just really ask you, you know, like Deb said, follow your hearts. We really would appreciate your voting for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is actually, does not say. I'm assuming in opposition wishing to speak, Larry. Is it Echelberger?
I'm Larry Echelberger. Me and my wife Linda live at 2990 Genesee Court, which also backs up to the proposed subdivision. And I'm talking to you now as a resident of the subdivision. I want you to know that I am on the HOA board, and I'm not talking for the HOA board. I'm just talking as an individual. So my comments are very similar to the same things you've heard. I think Mark did an outstanding job of summarizing everything. You know, it all comes down to me, anyway, that the City Council at that June 19th meeting added something that you guys and gals never had before. They put a stipulation in there of what they wanted to see, and Mark had their words up there. And that's what they wanted, you know? The sewer was okay. The electric was okay. The water was okay. The roads were okay. But they came along and said, listen, we want a little different. We want to keep this area looking like Prairie Meadows and the meadows. And it obviously, from Mark's talk, he had the figures up there. It does not. And so, again, I would ask, just like I did last time, that this be denied. It does not look like the Prairie Meadows or the meadows or any combination that you can come up with. The lot sizes are extremely small. And the transitions from the meadows especially into this development is dramatic. And it's just like falling off of a cliff. So again, I would ask that, I think this is a heck of an improvement. And I think Mark has done a good job of trying. He's working, he's getting there, but he's certainly not there yet. It's a lot better. I mean, I'm not up here to deny that. But it does not meet what the city and the mayor said they wanted. And so I wish that you would take a close look at that and deny this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. In opposition wishing to speak, John Stevens.
My name is John Stevens. My address is 1999 Staples in the Meadows. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission here. Got up and spoke at all of these different things. I may repeat some of it. You know, we've all heard, you know, density and everything. We want to try to keep that down. And it is true that the City Council wanted to make it consistent with the meadows as an R1S and consistently with the Meadows HOAs, which with the proposed lot sizes, they can't do that. Our setbacks are 40 feet. I realize that R1Ss are 15 feet on the back. But to be consistent with your neighbor, they have to have consistent HOAs also. All of these lots that are in this new proposal are smaller, except for one exception of one, which was an existing lot, than Prairie Meadows, the Meadows or the Meadows Grove. And you just can't, you know, we all pushed and pushed to get that R1S, to get it to a point where we didn't have to worry about things 10, 15 feet off of our back fence. And some bigger lots that would have homes on them with HOAs, and it would sure be nice if we could have those CCNRs up front so we really knew what we were governing with. Because once this PUD is approved, they can sell it tomorrow. The new buyer can change it. They can change it themselves. There's just, it's just too open-ended. You know, go R1S, but then, and then call it a PUD, and now it's R1 again. It just doesn't make any sense. And I would really like to see it go with what the council wished. And if there is going to be a difference, there needs to be some sort of buffer between the two of them. I did a drawing on this. It is a scale drawing done electronically. It's still a concession. Not real happy with it. But if I could show that. And this is the subject property here. I redrew it a little bit. Some of this isn't quite the scale. I didn't have good enough information off the plot map that I had for some of the roads and stuff over in here. That could change a little bit. What I've done here is put a 40-foot public, two-acre public space around the perimeter of it bordering the meadows. And I just threw in basically what these lots are, just to hint over a quarter-acre lot. Depending on how it really defines once it was laid out with a good plot map. You know, this comes up with about 53 lots in it. And I still think that's pretty high-density. And what I'm talking about for this public space here is kind of over here like they have in the Meadow Grove on the north side to where you've got the homes on one side of the street. You've got a grassy area with a sidewalk. And then you would have a fence here that backs up to the meadows. So you've got the buffer of this public space, which I went down to the city Planning and Zoning and asked them if that green space around the outside could count for the public space, and they said that it could be proposed. The park that they're proposing in this one, it's two acres of, you know, nobody else in the city is going to get any use out of this park. That park was really touted the last time at this meeting. And that was just a couple of pictures I had there. You know, and there's no public facilities or parking or anything in this park. So...
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, sir. We need to keep your drawings for the record.
Thank you, sir. Last individual in opposition wishing to speak, Lisa Ann Summers.
Good evening. I haven't met you before. Nice seeing you all tonight. Thank you for hearing us. Most everyone said what I wanted to say, so I'll just carry on. So I do want to touch on the intent of the City Council's four-to-one vote regarding the R1S zoning. I know it's been mentioned several times. However, the fact of the matter is, this does not, the PUD does not conform with the R1S zoning. If you look at the meadows, they're one acre. Prairie Meadows is from a half-acre up to an acre. And we saw some other slides about surrounding communities. So in that vein, this proposal has been revised for the third time and still falls short of the City Council's intent. I moved here from Irvine, California. And my primary mission when I moved here was I loved the small-town feel of Post Falls. It's sweet. It's nice. Everyone's friendly. Everyone likes each other and loves their neighbor. And not everyone's crammed on top of everyone else. I'm currently looking outside of the city of Post Falls because of the homes that are being built now. Because they are so small, and it's becoming a closed-in feeling. My main mission in moving here, one, to get away from the density and the traffic, was to not change what Post Falls is into something California. So that's still my main mission. And something also I think that we need to take into consideration is the fact that there's plenty of land in Post Falls. There's small properties everywhere. There aren't large properties everywhere. Because if there were, I'd move to a larger property. One of the things that I read at the City Council meeting, and I'll read here because I haven't had the pleasure of addressing you all, is a scripture from 2 Timothy 3, 1 through 5. This is a clear-word paraphrase, and the title is "Perilous Times of the Last Days." I want you to realize that as bad as times are now, this is nothing compared to the perilous times of the last days. People will love only themselves and money. They'll be conceited. They'll be abusive. They'll be disobedient, contemptuous of parents, ungrateful, and impious. Many will lose. All natural affection will break contracts, slander their friends, lack self-control, be brutal, and despiseers of what is good. They will be treacherous, rash, irresponsible, conceited, and will love pleasure more than they love God. Outwardly, they will appear religious, but they'll deny the power of God and the need for them to change. Don't be taken in by such people. I just, I'm really struggling with this here because I do see a lot of greed. And there have been concessions made, but not from the heart just because there's opposition. And we're all trying to fight for our community to make it remain what it is and what it has been and what we hope it to be. Some infrastructure that was put in, that was talked about prior to even the annexation. Here are some pictures of that.
If I have 15 seconds.
Okay. I have a lot of pictures, but I'll just show you a few. So things have been done prior to even annexation. Things outside of our control and things that we don't agree with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Applicant rebuttal.
First, I apologize. I did not give my name when I first spoke, and one of my compatriots pointed it out. Susan Weeks, on behalf of the applicant. It seems to be that some of what you're hearing tonight, again, is emotional. Some of it is substantive. So let's start with the substantive. There is a misperception, or general misperception I'm hearing tonight, about what R1S allows. There seems to be a perception that if you're at R1S, you are at one-acre lot, no variation. That is not correct. R1S, even had the applicant originally come in and asked for R1S zoning, they could have applied for a PUD. That is allowed under an R1S. And many of these homes surrounding this subdivision have R1Ss with just those type of PUDs. And so I've got a map up here for you to look at. And the reason that I'm giving this to you is to just show you a little of the surroundings with some color coding. So the red that you see here, that is the meadows, and that is the least density. The yellow are R1Ss that are developed as PUDs. So those are very near and close in proximity. The green that is immediately south to our proposal is R1. And then the blue is multifamily. So in this immediate vicinity, you have quite a mix of zoning and uses that are occurring. And we are in between that larger R1S and then an approved R1 zoning. So what we have done is we have transitioned the lots to better fit that, which... So what we have done is we have transitioned the lots to better fit that, which is what this commission said they would be more comfortable with. We have reduced our density by half from our first proposal. All of that is allowed. Something else I would like you to look at is, I just heard that parks aren't for the public, or they won't get any benefit of this park. Parks are for the public, and they will get benefits from these parks. And if you look here, in all of this zoning surrounding this area, there is not a single park for these homes. It does bring a value to these communities, and it is for everybody to use. It's not just for this subdivision to use. Somebody wants to go down there on Easter and have an Easter egg hunt with their children, they'll have the same right as any other member of the public to go down there and do that. Somebody wants to go down and play pickleball who lives in Prairie Meadows, or lives in the meadows, or lives south in country homes. They all have that right to do that. And those parks do add value to the community. I can say that with all certainty, having worked, helping get in the Riverstone Park, that was one of the things we heard over and over again. No one was going to use the Riverstone Park in Coeur d'Alene. It is well-used, and I would hope to see that this would be well-used. Those do bring value to the community. It was also said that we've not met the PUD requirements. That is not correct. A staff has told you, we have met the PUD requirements. Otherwise, staff would not be recommending that the commission review that and find that those conditions have been met. They've gone through meticulously in their staff report and told you how we have met every one of those. One other thing that I raised the last time we were in front of you is, what is needed in the community? And again, I went back and reviewed, there are over a dozen lots that are not yet built out after more than fifteen years in the Grove, or in the meadows. So we have the meadows with this large lot that we're being told is the desired lot size, and yet we're not getting full build out over that period of time, which would tend to indicate that's not what the community's looking for. So I would submit that just because council said they want it zoned R1S, they were not saying, take off the table, commission, and don't consider a PUD that we allow in our code if the applicant meets all of those requirements that we tell an applicant to meet if you're going to request a PUD. And we have done that, and we've done that in good faith. So let's talk a little about the emotional items now in that good faith. You'll notice this time that the opposition is significantly reduced. I heard that, and it's disappointing to us to have a board member who we negotiated with to give conditions and agree to reduce densities and agree to the one story, now come in and say, I don't speak as the board, I speak as an individual. And I understand he has the right to wear two hats, but I hope you can appreciate, to those of us who are trying to deal with people in good faith, it feels a little bit like a stab in the back, to say in one meeting, if you will do these things, we'll withdraw our opposition, and then to come in and oppose it and tell you that the HOA doesn't speak for these individuals. So let's talk about what we've done to work with the homeowners association. We were requested and attended three meetings. That first meeting had over two hundred people attending. The last meeting, we believe there were over a hundred people attending. This wasn't three board members out playing Rambo, not speaking on behalf of their homeowners association. This was us working in good faith with that homeowners association to address what they were telling us were their concerns. And we worked in good faith, and we did that. We submitted it to staff, and we've come here tonight and asked you to place that as a condition on any approval you give us. So on the emotional side, we have tried very hard to meet what we were told would allay those fears of the homeowners with this coming into the community. The last item, and this again came up last time, is an emotional item, and it's that we should somehow be punished for putting in infrastructure, and that staff somehow did an underhanded deal with us in doing that. And it was implied that that occurred because we were the same engineering firm working with the applicant who worked with the subdivision down here. That's not true. The subdivision below was engineered by Drew Dittman. Tri-State Consulting had nothing to do with that. However, they did talk to the city about putting in infrastructure to serve that, no matter how it ended up being served, and having twelve stubs. And that was done to prevent damaging roads in the future that were just then being put in, and to reduce cost for everybody involved to allow that to occur at that time. We could have went to the county and said, we have infrastructure, we already have East Green Acres irrigation water in there. That wasn't done to somehow hoodwink the city of Coeur d'Alene, or the city of Post Falls, excuse me. It was done to reduce costs and not damage future infrastructures that were being put in place at the time by a subdivision to the south. So it was an economy of scale type of matter. And it's not the first time staff has allowed that to occur. And it wasn't done to somehow argue to you, and we have never argued to you, that we're entitled to any sort of subdivision, annexation, or PUD based on that. It was merely done for the convenience of the city and the parties to prevent damage to the road by digging it up in the future. Did you want to speak, Mr. Afana?
Yeah.
Okay. And I do believe the applicant has a few words to say.
My name is Matthew Afana, and for the record, I live at 848 North Chase Road in Post Falls. You know, I've gone to these meetings from the very beginning, and from day one, I've heard different directions. First, it was railroad tracks. Then it was, you know, connecting Grange through to Chase. And, you know, and then it slowly turned, and we keep addressing these issues and concerns from not only your staff, and the traffic, and Rob Paulson Engineering. But as we keep going through and revising things, I want to feel that this is a collective effort from city staff, from our engineering team, from members of the HOA, whether they're for or against it. And, you know, we've worked really hard on these revisions to try to mold this subdivision to where it is now. And I want to point out something that really hasn't been brought up or talked about before. We've been tasked with what I call a very difficult one, to take an odd-shaped lot, number one. And number two, with R1 zoning right here to the south of us, and the R1S that surround us on the north side, and the R1 that's over in the northeast, and to transition that. There is not, I took a look around, me and my wife, we drove all through the meadows. It's beautiful. I'm not saying it's not. And a lot of the ideas that have been incorporated into the meadows are ideas that we are trying to incorporate in this subdivision. But again, I want to look and focus our attention on Staples Road and the R1 to the south. Not anywhere in any R1-zoned area does an R1 front, or R1S front onto an R1 street. It's non-existent. So the R1 lots to the south, we have to make some kind of transition. It wouldn't be fair to the homeowners that are going to buy in our subdivision to buy a one-acre, half-acre, one-third-acre lot, and they're sitting there across the street from a nine-thousand-square-foot lot. That just doesn't make any sense. This is the last infill piece around the meadows. And again, it's infill. And we've worked really hard to try to bring the connectivity for pedestrian, also for safety. By connecting these roads, fire department has better response time, and police departments have better response time, not only into our subdivision, but into the Meadow subdivision itself. So again, I ask you to approve this. This has been, this subdivision's been a lot of hard work, a lot of late nights, to try to make this a dream come true for a lot of people, our family. You know, I'm a Post Fall, I'm a resident, I live right down the street. This is my community, too. Our company, Poller, it's a Post Falls company. This is, again, this is our dream that we've had for years. And, you know, we're trying to make a nice place and a nice subdivision. And I'll tell you, at the end of whatever road we end up getting or taking its course, at the end, I guarantee you that the neighbors in the meadows, in the subdivision, you know, everybody's going to be happy about it. It's going to be a well, it's going to be a well, a nice subdivision, basically. And again, I appreciate everybody coming out here tonight. And again, I've listened to everybody multiple times, behind closed doors, out of the hearings. And I really feel that we've worked hard to try to bring everybody together. I can't please everybody at all. There's just no way, you know, to do that. And, but I think we've come up with a really smart-planned subdivision that's going to benefit the community, and for the residents that live in it and build houses in it. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate it.
Yep. I'll try to make my comments brief. I just want to cover some technical comments that were made through public testimony. As the engineer of record, I am aware, and definitely was aware, of all the improvements that were done on Staples, and we did get approval. Now, this is something new that the city of Post Falls has done in the past to mitigate having to dig up the road to put in services. And it was at our risk, our cost. So I don't see how we can be called greedy for that, to be absolutely honest with you. So blows my mind that that is what's, I'm still being accused of being. So this project is a standalone project. It doesn't rely on any of the services or facilities from the meadows or the surrounding properties. We've already vetted many a times that we've got adequate transportation, water, sewer, it's a sustainable piece of property and sustainable development. We just hope that we can get through this and move on and create another good, great community for the city of Post Falls. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Questions for staff? Going once, twice? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the hearing. Let's start down here.
Okay. Well, I can appreciate the work that's been done, and this is the, this is the third time I think we voted on this project. And starting at ninety-three and coming down to fifty-seven is definitely an improvement as far as the density. I was of the opinion from the first hearing that I would like to see it, third of an acre, somewhere around there. This, it's closer, but it still really just looks R1 to me. And I've gone back and forth on this because I do appreciate the work that's been done on it. And I am going to stay true to that on my vote tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I think I'm going to step back just a little bit and talk a little bit about how this, my personal opinion as to density, and really ours as a commission up here, doesn't really matter, at least in this case. I grew up here in Post Falls. I moved irrigation pipes out on the fields as a kid, and I was one of the kids sitting on the back of a tailgate burning these fields. And that's, you know, times have changed, and those fields aren't there anymore. I'm very nostalgic about that. I love seeing those open spaces out there. But that's, but Post Falls is changing. As a commission, we're tasked with, in this process, it's, you'll see on the agenda that it's quasi-judicial. What that means is that we, as a commission, are acting as pseudo-judges to determine whether or not the application and the record presented meets the requirements of the city of Post Falls code. It's a pretty simple yes-or-no answer. It doesn't have anything to do with our personal opinions necessarily. It has everything to do with the fact of whether they met the burden of proof as to whether they met the code. And those requirements are laid out in the staff report. And the staff did, I think, a very good job explaining how they met the code. And I didn't hear any testimony tonight, and contrary to the code, how stating that the applicant did not meet the code, or explaining how they did not meet the code. And so in this case, I think they did meet the code. I mean, I've read through the staff report, I've read through the applicant's materials, and I think regardless of my personal opinion of densities and things like that, that there are, that they've met the code. There are a couple of things that I think we, as a commission, can add in here, because it is a PUD, and I think it will help staff in the future and future planning commissions with the final PUD with regard to the park. I think that based on what the applicant has presented for amenities in the park, I think we should include that in any condition of approval, number six in particular. And then at the applicant, because of the applicant's request and his negotiations in good faith with the adjacent homeowners, I think we should add the condition fourteen with regards to setback in height for the properties adjacent to the meadows, with the exception of Lot eighteen, which has an existing house on it. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
I've, too, have listened to all this and listened to both sides, and I've lived through this, too, having something put in my neighborhood at one time that I didn't particularly like. But as stated, it comes down more to what, you know, if you're meeting all the guidelines and meeting everything, you know, and I think that, I understand that, how the, you know, people in the meadows feel, but those were acreage, those were big acreage lots at one time, too, and were broke down to acres so you guys could have your houses there. I think that the developer has tried to do a transition that will work. And like you said, across the street from him is one acre, so, I mean, I'm sorry, R1 lots. So his people are going to be looking at those, too, and probably thinking the same thing, you know, here I just have little houses, or little acreage across the street. So I just, I think that the developer has done a good job finally of trying to transition well. That's what we asked for, was some larger lots across the back there, so that there was more of a transition. So I'm happy with what they've done.
I think this is something that the commission has looked at a lot, providing transition between different zones, and have worked well with staff. And I also think it respects the property owner's right to develop his property as he sees fit. We've had, put some conditions on there, and the density has come down by half, and there's a good transition between the R1S and the R1, and I think it fits in very well. And I don't think compromise is a bad word. I think this is an excellent compromise, and I think it should go forward.
I was looking for things, fit, need, the staff's work, and common sense. You know, I grew up on a farm, several hundred acres, and just because we had a wheat field didn't mean that we neighbored, the farmer had to grow wheat. And so I understand the frustrations, I understand the emotions, but the reality is, is that we've been tasked with one simple thing, and did they meet what they need to meet? And in my opinion, yes, they did. Growth is inevitable. I know there's a lot of you that have grown up and lived here for a long, long time, and you would love to see things stay the same. That's not necessarily the case. It's a desirable community, and we are trying to work very hard as volunteers, I might add, work very, very hard for smart growth. And so that's what we're tasked with. So that being said, I would call for a motion.
In the case of subdivision S-17-09 and PUD, P-17-03, I would move to rec- In the case of subdivision S-17-09 and PUD, P-17-03, I would move to recommend approval, finding that the applicant has met the requirements of the code and that the proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, adding to condition number six, language to the effect that the park shall include amenities, including a pickleball court or play structure, note, or walking trails with lighting and a pergola. And that condition 14 be added stating that rear setbacks for those lots adjacent to the meadows, with the exception of Lot 18, shall be 15 feet in conformance with the R1S zoning. And those lots shall be limited to a single story with a bonus room over the garage. This condition shall be included in the CCNRs and may not be modified without consent of city staff. And I would also add the rest of the conditions as presented in the staff report.
I second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Keen?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampi?
No.
Okay. That takes us into the second public hearing of the evening.
Can we, sir?
We need to take a quick break?
Can we, please?
We'll take a three-minute break, then.
Thank you.
Three minutes? Holy smokes.